About that, I'm gonna call this May 7th meeting of the Mannerie Town Council. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, I'm not seeing our one possible speaker. Let's go to the presentations, Mr. Mayor. We have one presentation tonight.
I gotta tell you, I'm very excited about this presentation. I've done a lot of presentations. This one's very special. It's not often in the town of Mount Airy you actually have a gold, multiple gold and bronze champion, winner of anything in town, but we have just that here tonight. I'd like to ask Casey Schultz and her parents to join me at the podium. Or parents, whatever you like. Everybody, this is Casey Schultz standing here in front of us. I would like to read this proclamation to you, Casey. I'm balancing this banner. And by the way, before I read this, the Lyons Company was nice enough to loan me the use of both town entry monuments. Your name proclaiming your day, which will be announced later, that we bestowed upon you with the mayor and town council, will be posted on our entry signs for how many, I think we have like a week, so make sure you take good photographs of it. In addition, in addition to that, if I could get Mom and Dad on each side to unveil this. I'm gonna get on the other side, you all hold it. If you can hold that out. This will be posted downtown, and you can't see it, can you?
Wow. Oh, that's impressive.
Now, if you could hold it lower than Casey. So tonight, I have a town proclamation honoring Casey Schultz, world champion baton twirler. Whereas Casey Schultz is being recognized for representing our town and country in the world champion baton twirling competition. I believe that was held in Norway, correct? Oh my gosh. Casey Schultz proudly brought home the gold and bronze medal. She is actually a multiple gold winner. Even at her young age, she has inspired us all. Now, therefore, I, Pat Rockenberg, joined by the town council, who has also signed this, Mayor of Mount Airy, do hereby recognize Casey Schultz Day on May 19th for all of the town of Mount Airy to join in celebrating her great accomplishments. Now, before we photograph, I would like to ask, this is a town issue, I'd like to ask the whole town council to come up here and get behind me. Scott, you know my rule, you're too tall to stand by me. Larry, I'd like you by me. And Bob? Larry and Bob are my wingmen. Okay? Now, this is being presented to you on behalf of the mayor and the entire town council, so now we can get the photo ops. Let the mayor look. That's inappropriate, Bob. Casey, I think you're used to this, aren't you? A couple more pictures? This is fantastic. We are so proud of you. Would you like to say any words?
Thank you.
Thank you. A woman of two words, she says it all with her baton. Thank you very much. Mom or Dad, would you like to say anything?
I do have to be so supportive.
So, just a few words from her mama.
I just wanna thank the town for being so supportive. Thank you so much.
Well, that's what we do when you win gold and bronze. Yes, we're gonna hang that banner up here. And now that it's official, we will post it downtown. We have three of these.
Did you bring the medals?
Yeah, she's not, there she is. She's wearing them.
Oh, okay.
Wow. Look at this.
I didn't notice those. Just remember, patos are not yours.
He's beginning to feel the electric field.
He can do a lot of things, but a baton is not one of them, I'm pretty sure.
Good job.
Nope, she's not a guest speaker, I know that.
No, I thought it was a fan, but I didn't focus on her.
Thank you, Alfred.
You're quite welcome.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, what we've got tonight is the approval of the April 2nd meeting and the special council meeting of April 17th, not the closed minutes, because we were just handing us.
Not the special ones either.
Okay, that's right, okay.
We'll do that next month.
All right, we're only doing the, we're only doing the April 2nd and May 18th, regular council meeting minutes, the special one, okay.
I'll move.
Uh-oh. Bob moves, Scott seconded, any discussion? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Chief, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. This is Chief Reitz with the Mannerie Police Department, presenting tonight's chief report. During the month, the department participated in nine trainings and meetings and special events. Some of the highlights were the planning meetings for the Maryland, or the Mannerie Police Department National Night Out. We attended the Special Olympics Tournament of Champions that were held at McDaniel College. And we also were there for the opening ceremonies for the Maryland Special Olympics, Olympic Games at Westminster High School. And we also had our National Drug Takeback Day here at the Mannerie Police Department. During the, just the National Drug Takeback Day, we collected three large bags of various prescriptions and non-prescription medications. Kinda estimated the weight to be between 130 and 150 pounds. Carroll County altogether combined collected 1,181 pounds of prescription medications and non-prescription medications for destruction with the DEA. So, they did a really good job. I'd like to extend my thanks to people, listen, everybody from the sanitation commission that came and helped out with that. They did a great job. They stood out there on the curbside, and people handed over their prescriptions, they put it in a bucket and brought it in and submitted it to us, and, and we did that for about six, seven hours that day, and took a lot of drugs and a lot of good, a lot of dangerous drugs off the street, because we were seeing stuff like fentanyl patches and things like that. So, it's, that's good that that's not sitting in someone's, in someone's medicine cabinet someplace for the wrong hands to get a hold of that, so we did a very good job. For community outreach, the law enforcement torch run will be held on June 6th. The torch run supports the Maryland Special Olympics. The Mannerie Police Department will be running in the Mount Airy leg along with the Maryland State Police, which will start at the Mannerie Volunteer Fire Company and end at McDaniel College. We have the longest leg of the, of the, of the run. We're actually running from all points in the county. Law enforcement officers from various departments run from Tonny Town and Manchester, Hampstead area and so forth in Mount Airy. And we all run to Westminster, to McDaniel College, where we all meet up, and it supports the Special Olympics. Also, we have Maryland Torch, Special Olympics Torch Run t-shirts here at Town Hall. And for a $15 donation, you can also get a t-shirt. We have limited sizes available here still, and also ball caps for $15. And the deadline for purchasing them is May 11th, so if anybody would like one of them, please see Katie Moore here at Town Hall. During the month, going to our statistics, we handled 1,208 events. Out of those eight, of 1,208 events, we took 60 police reports. So we had a fairly busy month for April as well. When you look at the statistics for our traffic enforcement, we issued 68 traffic citations, 176 warnings, 29 equipment repair orders. We made one DUI arrest. We had four different traffic arrests that were made, and we had 199 total traffic stops. As far as our criminal enforcement, we had nine criminal apprehensions and issued two civil citations. K-9, we also had a very active month. Our K-9 officer went out, made several arrests. In addition, he also recovered a lot of narcotics this month. One recovered 12.1 grams of heroin off a traffic stop, and then we also recovered a lot of cocaine and paraphernalia as well. So, it was a very active month. I believe he conducted roughly seven or eight drug scams. So, that is the chief's report. Does anybody have any questions?
Is Holly going to model the stuff for you?
Holly's not, Douglas will.
They look really cool on Facebook. Yeah, look at that, Maryland logo, that's always popular.
Law enforcement torch.
And who's running our leg? Or is there multiple officers?
We have, we're, we're, we're still in the process of getting all that worked out. We also have a, a Special Olympics.
You're a civic, draws the short straw.
That we support, so we either can run it, or we can bike it. So.
Ah.
Like I said, we'll have a group of troopers that are with us, and we all run like a leg, you know, we'll run like a mile or so, and then.
If, if you could, on the town website, can you get with somebody that's good with our town website and our Facebook page, maybe put the, where you're doing this and at what time, so if people wanna come out and support you, they can.
Absolutely.
So if we can get it on our website and Facebook. And also, first of all, I wanna thank you for doing a fantastic job. Have you ever went back and compared stats from our former, when we were under the state police, where we may have had limited coverage, to where we're at now? Have you compared stats?
I have never, no, I've never really looked back to see what was done before.
I think that would be interesting.
We could do that.
Yeah, that would be of some interest to see the increase in enforcement that now we're seeing.
I like to get like enough, a good, like six months or seven months, eight months worth of data to kinda maybe start back and look.
And it's not to find fault with anyone, it's just to show what we're doing with our investment.
Right.
And how much more we're getting out of it.
Okay.
Assuming we're getting more, I think we are. Somebody had read the paper and they were kind of astonished, I knew you were getting some complaints about too much enforcement in certain areas, and I think that's a good complaint to have.
Right.
Yeah, I told them I don't have a whole lot of patience with that, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Mannerie Volunteer Fire Company report. Bruce?
For the month of April, rescue calls, we had 109 in Carroll, 49 in Frederick, seven in Howard, for a total of 165 rescue calls for service. Fire, we had 16 in Carroll, 10 in Frederick, for a total of 26 calls for service, resulting in a total of 125 calls for service in Carroll, 59 in Frederick, seven in Howard, and we didn't run any in Montgomery that month, for a total of 191 calls for service. Our last breakfast of the season will be May 20th, so please come out for that, and then we'll be starting that back up in the fall. You may recall, I think it was back in March, that the links at Shaladon had a special where if you went and got a meal, one week it was the police department, and the other week it was the fire department. And the organization that got the most, raised the most money, got an extra $100. So Chief, we're enjoying our $100 that we got.
Whoa, 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 I didn't even hear about this until. Chief, if I'd have known. All right, thanks, Bruce. Okay, community concerns, citizen comments, this is a time we set aside for anybody who wants to address the council on anything. And I think Wednesday, the farmer's market is coming up, am I right, Alan?
Not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay.
All right. So, we have a lot happening at the Mount Airy Main Street Farmer's Market, and I'm gonna hand these to you, Bob, so you can pass that out. This is the mailer that went out as part of the Mark Bigco grant, and it went to, I don't know, around 9,400 households and including 372 businesses.
That's nice.
The back of it has changed a little bit. Our, our vendors are fluctuating right now, and it always happens about a week before the market. We are switching out Diane's Cupcakeery for a gourmet popcorn place up in Tonny Town that is coming down. But otherwise, we, we have everybody there, including Angelina's Crab Cakes of Maryland. They're new, and they're out of Baltimore County, they're based in Baltimore County, but their crapping operation is based on Ken Island. So that's about as close as you could get. The Sweet Farm, we also have them. They have sauerkrauts and pickles. And there's one other one that I was looking, oh, Neat Nick's Preserves, they're out of Howard County, so they have the jams and jellies. So those are the, the new ones we have. 14 returning from previous markets, eight of them are full-time, and six of them are part-time. I think I have that right. So, out of 25 vendors to start off with, come. Larry is playing, I believe, on September 5th.
September 5th.
Yeah. So Larry and Mary are playing. We have music every week, some that you'll recognize from before, and there's also one that's a duo from Three for All, they play at other farmer's markets. So, look at the website, mountairymainstreetfarmersmarket.org. Okay?
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
I forgot to mention one other thing. We just got a grant from Walmart. So, $3,600 that will cover, that will cover the Mount Airy net, that the patrons of the Mount Airy net will be able to come down to the market all season long, and once a month, they'll, the patrons will get $10 in vouchers to use.
Wow, awesome. And thank you, Walmart.
Thank you, Walmart.
Hey, Dick.
Hi, Dick Swanson, Mannerie Main Street Association. Just to latch on, and it's part of the Mannerie Main Streets Association's efforts to partner with local nonprofits and organizations for the benefit of the town, and we collaborated with the Mount Airy net and were able to obtain that generous grant from Walmart and help less privilege in our community, so we're kinda proud of that. But I really wanted to talk about, just for a moment, a reminder that back in April 7th, the weatherman predicted five-day itches of snow, and we therefore took what we thought was appropriate action and moved the chili cook-off to Saturday, May 26th. Turned out, we didn't get a flake of snow, but the weather, we can guarantee, probably be a little warmer than it was that day. So encourage everybody to come on out to the chili cook-off. We're having a cornhole tournament. There is a restaurant competition, we brought that back. And Jeff from Conchitas is kinda putting that together for us, we appreciate that. We have music, vendors, food, you know, all, all the good stuff.
Free parking.
Free parking, yes. Shuttle bus from the carnival grounds that you can take over to, so you don't get caught in congestion downtown as we close Main Street. So we're looking forward to that, and hopefully, everybody could make it. And I, in spite of what the weatherman may say, I promise there will be no snow.
Thanks, Dick. Fantastic event every year.
And he had mentioned parking too, and thanks to Rails to Trails, people can park at Watkins Park and walk down the trails, so keep that in mind.
Yes, yes.
We've got a whole resource there now, thanks to Rails to Trails.
Yes, and stop in there and get a, something to eat on your walk through Rails to Trails, or a refreshment.
I see you two dueling there.
Wayne Evans, and tonight, I'm representing a lot of the service clubs, actually, I'm representing the Lyons Club, but every year, anybody that's lived in town for any length of time has heard of the Diamond Jubilee. What we do, the service clubs, that's the Kiwanis, the Rotary, both Lyons Clubs, the Auxiliary for the American Legion and the American Legion, all host a dinner for the folks that live in the 2177 zip code that are over 75. That's a lot of people. We are blessed to have somewhere around 800 people in that zip code that are 75-plus. As I said, we host a dinner for them every year. We serve the food, we obviously pay for all the food, but we send out about 600 and some odd invitations, and the first 200, and they come back quickly. The first 200 come back, and they're the ones that actually get in for the dinner. The dinner is held on the 23rd of this month at the fire department, it's a Wednesday night, at, excuse me, not at the fire department, it's at the American Legion Post, 191 down on Prospect. And as I said, this is something that we've done for years and years. It's a service that all of the service clubs are a, it's, we take great pleasure in doing that. There are a number of people there that are in the service clubs as well, and have been for 50 years, some of them. So, that being said, I would invite the councilman, chief, any of the, any of the guys, Mayor Pat, to stop in and say hello. The, the crowd would appreciate it. It's a very early crowd, as you might guess. They'll, they'll start following in there about 4:30 in the afternoon. It's a very early evening, and we serve dinner quite promptly, 5:00, 5:30, something like that. So it's an early evening, but if you would like to stop by, please do so. We'd enjoy having you come by.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thanks.
Hello, Frank?
Good evening, Frank Dursfall. I'm on the Economic Development Commission and also a businessman in, in the community. This is not directly related through the Economic Development Commission, this is just me with some thoughts that I, I was at the budget meeting that you guys had, and it's a, it's quite a job to, to get all that done, and, and, you know, you, you have to allow for the expenses for the entire year, and certainly, you do a good job with it, and it'll, we'll get that taken care of tonight as well. But I was thinking that maybe, from a, looking at it from a businessman's point of view, one thing that maybe you don't really look into, that you should seriously consider in your future budget allowances, is a, a, allowing for what potential expenses are gonna come up within the next three to five years. You know, you guys focus on the near-term expense of what's happening today and, you know, throughout that year, but nobody really takes the time to try to evaluate projects and costs, capital expenses, they're gonna come up in longer term, and as a prudent businessman, we have to, as a rule, a good business, you know, forecast future expenses, capital expenses. So, you know, my suggestion, because I didn't see hardly any of that done in, in the course of the budget meeting, I would suggest that, you know, even preparing now, it's too late for this year, but in for your future, for this year, for the next year coming up, maybe have the engineering staff and maybe planning and zoning, put their heads together and come up with some forecasts of future expenses that may be coming down the pike, because personally, I see some major expenses, you know, in that range of time coming down the pike that could affect your budget seriously in that time. So, that's just my thought at this point, and you may wanna look into that.
I'll let the mayor address that, if he wants to.
Well, usually, no, I usually don't.
Okay.
It's their, their, their time to speak, but you may wanna look at the budget, we do a five-year forecast.
Just what?
We do a five-year forecast.
I, I didn't see any of that.
Our budget goes out to 2023, and there's, so we do.
There's five-year capital forecast.
Yeah. So it is in there.
Just take a look when you get a chance.
Yeah. Okay, very good, thanks.
Thanks, Wayne. And Frank, you're right, we just, we, we, we're, we are doing that. Carl?
Hello, my current, my name's Carl Munder, 2002, Philbrook Lane, Sterling Glen Community. I'm just here to request, I guess, some updates, or to see if the town can complete some projects that they have, not promised, but are well-informed of. There has been a sinkhole in, I believe, Philbrook Lane, by the park in front of a house for about seven years, right next to the curb. It's small enough, but it's about two feet long, about three to four inches deep, maybe about eight inches wide, in front of a house that a lot of neighborhood kids play at, right across from the park. I've brought this up before, and nothing's been done with it, so just bringing that back up again, to see if it can be at least patched or filled in, so less dangerous for the kids to run over the street in front of the park and stuff. Second one that I'm bringing up was.
Barney, you got that?
Yeah.
I see Barney writing it down.
Yeah. Second one I'm bringing up is, this past fall, I came before the council, Street and Roads, to get the school bus stopping signs in place on Candace Road by the neighborhood, Candace Road and I believe Sterling Glen Way, just to identify, 'cause it's a blind hill. I'm still waiting on those, or the neighborhood's still waiting to have those installed. The school bus stopping signs by Candace and Sterling Glen Way, just to make sure at least they'll, they're up by next school year, just to make sure, because, I mean, we got rid of the bus stop on Buffalo Road that brought into the neighborhood to save the kids the trouble of crossing Buff, Buffalo Ray, Buffalo Road of about 40 kids crossing that every, every day, so I thank you for that. But the school bus stop signs would, yeah, school bus stop signs would help also on Candace, since it's a blind hill coming down from North Main. It's a North, yeah, coming down North, North Main to Buffalo Road, it's kind of a blind hill. And third, just maybe not really for the neighborhood, for the town itself, I've noticed that there are at, there's new police station signs at Center Street and Main Street pointing back towards the police station for visitors that come in, if they're wondering where the police station is, that might be helpful directing them back there.
I think they've been ordered.
Oh, they've been ordered, okay, I just have it there. Okay, that's fine, never mind that. That's it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you all.
Carl?
Yes.
Question, the school bus sign locations?
Yes.
Are those within the town boundary or outside?
The ones that I'm requesting are within the town boundaries.
The Candace one's a new one. The last time we discussed was Buffalo Road.
Yeah, but Candace, I thought I included the Candace.
Never talked about Candace, but that's fine, we can look into it, Barney. If we can get Brian to look into that. Thanks.
All right. Ordinance, move on to ordinance's resolutions. 2018-7 adopts and approves the town Mannerie's budget, and the tax rate for fiscal 2018-19 is here for adoption. I will, I will move, we accept it. Do I have a second?
Yes, you can.
I see a second, that's a second from you, Bob?
Yes, it is.
Any discussion?
Just a comment on the tax rate. Last year, we reduced the tax rate. This year, we kept the tax rate the same. We're required by law to advertise that it's an increase in tax, when actually, the only increase is gonna be if your property values go up, which is a good thing. So we actually did not raise taxes, we kept the rate the same, we can continually lower it, 'cause then if it reverses, we'll find ourselves in a huge deficit. We did lower it last year, we kept the same rate, and with any, I don't wanna say law, but I think thanks to good leadership, our property values keep going up, and it's a good problem to have, but our tax rate is the same as it was last year. So I just wanna clarify what we had to publicize. Thank you.
Yes, and fortunately, the town falls subject to what, for lack of a better term, is a scam that the state runs, which is, they don't understand a concept that we have here in town, which is, your house in town, even though the property may go up, we don't reassess it. So your house has been fixed at its assessed rate since, I think, 1999, might have been the last time we changed it. So, the state thinks that we're raising your assessments every year. So from the state's perspective, when we leave our property tax rate the same, the state goes, "Oh, they're actually raising taxes," 'cause there's kinda this assumption that your, that your assessed value's going up, but no, it's not. So in reality, in your, for your house, your taxes will be exactly the same this year, exactly to the penny.
But by the law, we had.
That they were last year. But the state doesn't understand that, because everybody else in the state raises your assessed value, which we do not do. It's this weird quirk, but we, we prefer to not raise your taxes. And last year, we actually did actually lower your taxes.
Yeah, we are looking at challenging that, that we have to in fact do that advertising. It's very misleading.
Yeah, it is, it is misleading. Now, if your house sells, you do commit at the new assessed value, when you, when you buy a new house, you get that new value, and if you have non-residential property, for example, businesses and things like that, they are still assessed. So where the town actually increases taxes is sales of houses, new houses, and increase of commercial property. But for anybody who lives in town and has a house, your taxes have gone down. I think when I took office, we were over 20 cents per hundred, and now we're only under 17 cents per hundred, so I'm paying, I pay less in taxes now than I did when I, you know, than I did 20 years ago. So unfortunately, that's the way it works. All right, any discussion? All right, any discussion on the budget or the tax rate? All right, I, I move that we accept it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. That looked unanimous to me.
Well, and I, I want, Peter, you and Pat, pretty much leave that, that charge. And you've gotten so good at this along with Charlene, with all the information for the out-years and everything that we've been doing for years now, that this process is a whole lot easier than it was ten years ago.
Well, I know that it's 'cause the mayor is really cheap. I mean, I gotta tell you, when I get the budget, I know that he's nickel-and-dimed it.
I like the word frugal.
Thank you, thank you.
I know that he has gone over every, you know, so there's not, there's no fluff in it when he, when he puts it forward.
Having sat through some horrific bu- budget meetings and what we went through this past, this past month, just, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks to everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
All right, two thousand and eighteen, this is here to amend part one of the code to create chapter thirty-six A entitled Sustainable Mount Airy Commission. This is here for introduction. Jason, this you?
Yes.
You wanna introduce it?
That's all right, go ahead.
I will second it. I'm assuming you're introducing it and I'm seconding it.
Sounds great.
All right, so move on. Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash five, Community Legacy Resolution Facade Improvement Program. This is just kind of an update of what we do all the time. I will move, we accept this. See a second from Scott. Any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye. Aye. This just allows people in town to continue, continue to get those grants.
And we discussed that when, uh, US Senator Ben Cardin visited town. We discussed some things we need, and that was bought out.
And it's a, it's a fifty-fifty plan also where, you know.
Okay.
The, the home or the business owner will pay fifty percent of the cost and, and the state will pay the other fifty percent.
And we've had a lot of people take part in that. I think Dick certainly knows a lot about that.
Debbie, just have one question on number four. It shows this as being eighteen dash forty-two.
It's an annexation resolution.
It's the annexation resolution.
Okay, okay, but, but we're really at forty-two?
But it's the, of the annexations that have been brought in, not in, for this year.
Okay, okay.
This is ever.
Ever, okay.
Correct.
Okay, 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 okay. I got you, okay. I was looking at that going, that, that number doesn't make sense to me, okay. This is here solely for introduction or referral to the planning commission? I will introduce it. Do I have a second? I see Bob seconding it. That will go to planning. All righty, moving on. New business. Recommendation for purchase of a sewer camera and a used bucket truck. I don't know if Brian was gonna be here. I don't, is Brian here to discuss that?
Call Sam.
There's no bucket truck. Move that to next month. Camera's on, bucket truck is off.
All right. And so the camera is, looks like six.
Is that the second one?
That's the sixty, yeah, which.
Side con?
Well, we got sixty-four.
Sixty-six.
I'm just looking, sixty-four, sixty-six, and sixty-seven. I'm assuming he's recommending we take the sixty-four.
Gabby, do you know if he's recommending?
Anybody know?
Let me see, I'm in.
'Cause he gave, he gave us all the bids, which is, which is good.
Just no recommendation.
But no, I, there's not a.
I'm not sure.
You know, and normally the chief wants the recommendation, but every now and then it's not, you know, there's some reason why. Right, sometimes it goes, right, right.
Of course, I think he's not here to discuss, my apologies.
Well, here, um, I am not sure, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that it is the lowest one. He did tell me different, put it that way.
Okay.
Why don't you go since you're just a thousand apart to approve the highest? And as you know, we never have to go with that, but that way.
Well, I'm wondering if Brian's on his way.
You could table it to him in a meeting. We're probably gonna be over in ten minutes.
Well, I know that he, he has to be, he coaches, and so he can't get here till too late sometime, so.
Yeah.
Let's, let's hold this, guys, to see if Bob, Brian walks in.
Sixty-four, sixty-six.
Sixty-seven is the high.
If he's not here.
We should.
Go with up.
I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold on this one till.
If it's about ten minutes, we'll know something.
Yeah, Brian, I mean, if, you know, I just know that Brian is, was doing something at sports, and he gets here a little late, and we're running a little fast. Okay, um, next up, we have the Prime, Pine Grove Chapel and Cemetery on here, just for some discussion. Scott and I were both approached by Bonnie Winkler about what is eventually going to happen with the cemetery and the actual Pine Grove building. The people who have been running that now for a long time, Travis Norwood ran it for a long time, and obviously Travis passed away, I don't know, eight, ten years ago? And it kind of fell to the next in line, who happened to be Bonnie, but is, you know, she was quick to tell us, she's not sure how many more years she can do that. Something is eventually going to be needed to take care of this cemetery and the Pine Grove Chapel and the facility up there. She says it's, you know, it's not, it doesn't have any financial problems. They pay people to run everything. The question is, does the town want to somehow talk about maybe, and we're just, at this point, just talking, uh, look into the possibility of maybe the town taking it over and setting up a town organization to oversee it, uh, which is what is operating it now. There's basically a nonprofit that oversees it now, but they're all aging out of it.
I, I think we can keep it around for discussion. I, I don't know, I don't know how this kind of thing, you know.
Well, I think, I think if, if we're interested, I think we need to say to Tom, Tom, take a look at how the property is set up, how it's titled. My understanding is it's two separate parcels. The building is a parcel and the property is a parcel. And maybe give us some advice on what we could do. In other words, how that would work.
It would be nice if the, if the burial plots themselves are private industry, and it's maintained by private industry, that perhaps they take that back with us taking ownership and responsibility for the historic chapel itself. I think that might be a better option, so we don't get into managing if anybody's interested. I think managing.
Well, you may contract it out.
Well, even managing the contract would be nice. If they just wanna deed it over, deed it over to somebody else and us take the, so my suggestion.
But see, I'm, I'm, I'm suspecting, based on their charter, they may have problems with what they can do. But like I said, if we're interested, we need to, we could say to Tom, do some preliminary work and let us know what can be done. But that's if you guys are interested.
I'm interested in finding out what Tom can find us. We had that discussion.
Tom, and if we could look at the options, splitting it up too with.
Yeah, whatever the options are, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what's found, but, but within a few years, we, within a few years, there's gonna be a problem up there.
We go there every year.
No, we need to keep the building.
For the servicemen and everything else.
That needs to, that's a, that's part of our history, we need to make.
Yeah, I'm told the building is deeded separately than the rest of it, but, uh, you know, I just, we just wanted to kind of bring it up here so that the town can maybe say, if we're interested, then we'll, we'll give Tom that assignment.
Yeah, I think so.
Do I, do I see everybody looking? Yeah, at least Tom should find out.
Certainly interesting helping find the solution.
Okay.
We can't let that building deteriorate.
I think everybody agrees to save the building, but maybe the business gets a little sketchy.
Tom, that's, uh.
Well, not that it's sketchy, maybe it's the wrong word.
Well, it would, it would be great to have a nonprofit step up.
Tom's, Tom's, Tom's got that. Bill, if it's real quick, 'cause we're trying to.
Yeah, real quick, is this also a possibility in the consideration for the Historical Society? It'd also be a possibility.
Well, we don't know what we can do yet, so, yeah, so when we get there, we may say to the Historical Society, hey, you wanna run that?
Yeah, but I think you're, you're on a good track.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, that may, that may be where we get to. All right, thanks.
Excuse me, Peter. Right from Brian. He said, um, he's recommending the sixty-four thousand bid from Maryland Industrial Trucks.
All right, I will therefore move, we take the sixty-four thousand. It's already seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
There you go, Brian.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. Okay, application for zoning map amendment for four forty, Twin Arch Road, referring that to the planning commission. I will, I guess, introduce it. Do I got a second? Bob seconding it, that will go to planning.
Remember that when that comes back, that's, that's a request to rezone in piecemeal fashion of a piece of property based on, uh, based on a change in character of the neighborhood. When it comes back, your function as the town council's going to be almost judicial, quasi-judicial in nature. So be formal hearing, whether it be a presentation of evidence, findings of fact, conclusions of law.
To say, does it have to prove that there was a mistake made in the master plan?
Well, no, change. Change in nature.
Change in character is the basis for this particular application.
But that's the only way we can alter our ma- our master plan, the rezoning, correct?
That's correct.
But they have to prove.
In this instance, yes, by mistake as well, that's another.
But because we're serving a judicial capacity, we shouldn't be having any independent conversations with the property owners or anything like that. At least, that's what they always told me at the MML meetings. I mean, I guess if you wanted to drive by, 'cause I drive by there all the time.
I think it, we need to drive by. You all need to.
But they, they, to be clear, have to prove without a doubt that.
It's not without a doubt. Well, I'll, I'll give you something on that, what the verdict proof is, but yes.
Would they vote the night of the presentation?
Yeah, they could. They probably would vote. The way it would work is, is that you all would probably vote that evening on, on whether to grant or deny, pending preparation of formal set of findings of fact and conclusions of law, which I would draft. And then that draft would be before you the following month.
So council, what, I just want the council to have ample opportunity to drive by the property and do an actual site visit, I think.
Oh, yeah, plenty of time, 'cause this is only referred initially to the planning.
It's going to planning. They're gonna deal with it, come back.
Okay.
Right. So, but anyway, we come back with a draft set of findings of, proposed findings of fact and conclusions, in which you all would then formally vote to adopt or change, modify as necessary, and then adopt. And then at that point in time, the period to appeal to the circuit court would begin. And those who could appeal would be either the applicant, if the applicant's not satisfied with the decision, or any aggrieved party, as those terms are defined within Maryland law, basically in case law.
Would we have to put an addendum to our master plan?
An addendum to your master plan, no, but you would have to amend.
Your maps, I think.
The map.
Who pays that cost?
Well, they pay a.
Assuming it's substantial.
Well, the applicant would, because the applicant has paid, I think, a, what, a deposit toward, you know, fee for this application. I have to look into that a little further, but I believe they would have to pay for the cost, not the.
Okay.
All right, up next, request for the council to approve expenses for the Brittany Manor Basketball Court. Larry, this is really yours.
Yeah, uh, we finally got a good bid in for the, for the basketball court. This year, we have budgeted for this fiscal year fifty-five thousand, and for next fiscal year, we have an additional, I think we said thirteen thousand to add up on top of that. The court, uh, total cost of the court itself would be sixty-three thousand, seven hundred, ninety-five dollars, uh, which would be paid over the fiscal year line in thirds. And then the cost for fencing that goes along that basketball court, as designed with a black vinyl over metal fencing, would be six hundred and forty bucks for a ten-foot section of it. So that would be cost on, on top of that. Comes out just a little bit over budget, but I think we can work within the budget to, to get this thing done correctly. And then a fellow council member, uh, mentioned the idea of, of taking a look at that fencing and seeing if we could drive that cost down a little bit by having some fencing alternatives.
I'm like, you're not caging it in completely, idea.
Six hundred dollars sounds like a good price for a ten-foot fence.
Well, uh, you know, it depends on the, uh, the quality, the look that we want. You know, and it certainly looks good out on the east-west basketball court, uh, in that manner, but I do think that, you know, we need to look at the options and, and make sure that we do it financially responsible. The basketball court itself ends up being seventy-four feet by forty-two feet. They added concrete to the sides of it to make it a little bit bigger so that the fence posts could actually sit in the concrete. So, uh, what I'm asking for is that, that the council approves that expenditure as soon as the memorandum of understanding or the easement is, is approved, which I think we're on the way to that by Doc Fold Properties.
It has to come back, the MOU and the easement still have to come back here.
True.
So, so it's not like you can start building as soon as, you know.
Right, but, uh, you know, I wanna get locked in.
You can approve the expense, it's over thirty thousand.
We can approve the expense, it's just a matter of, that it won't get spent until we approve.
Yeah, you did say contingent upon.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's something, you know, if the status of, of that agreement can be discussed right now or if that needs.
Yeah, I think it can be. Basically, when we originally drafted this back in the fall, it's gonna be a memorandum of understanding, and then ultimately an easement would be entered into, and then a deed. Since then, um, the, of course, the preliminary subdivision plan was approved at the end of April, and in those plans, which will ultimately be finalized and approved, it's, it sets forth the, the area we're talking about, to the soccer field, the lower soccer field, and it calls for a dedication of that field to the town. So the way now we're able to arrange this, and this was suggested, um, by the other side, is that we just do an easement that's in place now, allows to build. That will exist until such time as there's a dedication, and at that point in time, the town will actually fully, in fee simple, own the lower soccer field.
Fee simple's a technical term for we own it completely.
Yes, fee simple means, is not an easement, but it's a, it's a full rights of ownership.
So I guess the, the only comment I have about that is that if we own it, then we have to keep the upkeep on it constantly.
Which, which we currently are.
Which we currently are.
Yeah, so we budget. And there would be. Because there'll be additional cost now with the concrete and the fencing.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a town basketball court.
No, it's fine.
Yeah, going forward.
And that would be true during the time that we hold an easement interest to, to it as well.
Bob?
I was just gonna say, as, as far as the soccer fields go, the sports organizations that use and provide the maintenance, that's the deal. Is that, is that still.
Well, the town is doing some mowing out there as well.
Yeah, but as far as basketball court, it's gonna be a town court.
We, we currently own, remember, the upper field with the parking lot that lines the, this, this lower soccer field that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Larry, you wanna make the motion?
I have, uh, one more question. With the passing of this, then is the owner or the developer expecting to then get into the town, the next steps through planning?
Well, he's, he's been preliminarily approved for Brittany Manor at the last planning meeting. That was the, uh, kind of the wicket they were waiting for to either enter a memorandum of understanding or an easement with the town. So we, we met that threshold in their mind, and that's what's opened up the avenue to, to move forward.
Okay.
The one thing I wanna make sure of the contract documents once entered into is to, to make sure that we're not obligated to pay the contractor for this unless and until we issue a notice to proceed. Because there is one complication to the easement, and that is that we do need the bank to sign off, uh, subordinating their rights to ours, uh, on this particular field. We don't wanna build a, a nice new basketball court and have the bank take it over at some point.
Oh, yeah, you're right, have, yeah, if, if some, yeah, a good point, Tom.
So, so we're gonna have to do that, and easement's drafted for that purpose. Sometimes that does take a little while, so I just wanna make sure we're not committed to the contractor.
Yeah, we won't sign off.
No, we're just, we're just, you know, provided everything gets done, we can. So I'm assuming Larry's moving it, I'll second it. Any more discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Aye. You, now, Jason.
Yep.
Was that a?
I think, that's a nay. I think, that's a nay. Yeah, I, I think we just need to wait a little bit, a little bit longer.
All right. All right, on to mayor and council reports. Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'm gonna disappoint many. I don't have a mayor's report. Uh, we did, Peter and I and the rest of you did receive an email this evening. It's actually kind of last minute. But, uh, good news, the governor, Hogan, is coming to town, visiting some of our service organizations, fire company, VFW, and we've been invited to catch him at one of his stops, so. Uh, we're very thankful that the governor's coming to town. Uh, we should know about it a little bit, a little bit before tonight, but, uh, we're thankful he's coming to town and visiting our, um, VFW, as in our first responders. We're excited about that. They certainly are deserving, so. Uh, we're excited about that. Uh, that concludes my mayor's report.
Oh, Wednesday. Did I forget that? It's this Wednesday?
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not posting his schedule, but he'll be visiting various stops in the town of Manor on Wednesday. My apologies.
All right.
And today's Tuesday night.
No, it's Monday night.
I'm sorry, I didn't miss that.
You said that, and tonight's Tuesday night. We said, no, it's Monday night.
Pat's been, Pat's been up some, what?
Didn't want to give us an update on the health plan?
Larry?
No, 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 just, well, he brought up that, uh, Ben Carden, which has been all over Facebook. Uh, we were all so very pleased to have U.S. Senator, uh, Ben Carden. He actually did set up a time to come in and meet with the mayor and town council and did a walking tour of all our businesses to promote, uh, Small Business Week. Uh, that was very exciting. We took that opportunity, I think Larry Ben is here the most, about Rails to Trails and some things that we needed, uh, in addition to the, uh, you have some stuff on that?
No.
You're already, but Larry, Larry definitely Ben is here, and, uh, there's some things that, uh, I think his visit was very beneficial to the town as far as small business and some opportunities we can take. Thank you, Scott, for reminding me about that, keeping me straight on the days.
It, it was actually a red-letter day, because the government came here and bought us lunch. How often does that happen?
Yeah, he did pay for lunch.
Concheta's is scoring on this.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Government.
Anytime the government's gonna show up and buy me a lunch, I'm gonna take it. There you go.
All right, um, liaison report to, uh, beautification. Uh, a lot of work has been done by the beautification commission out at Bryson Field off of, uh, Prospect Road and the entry to East West, uh, Park, as well as, uh, out at Wildwood Park, uh, some work has been done out there as well. So they've been out there quietly struggling away while, uh, while we've been, uh, just enjoying the, uh, beautification efforts. On May nineteenth, the Rotary Club is joining up with the Mount Airy Trash Mob, uh, to help clean up Watkins Park. I believe that's at ten o'clock, but I know they, uh, they've been posting some stuff on Facebook, so. Uh, May nineteenth is also a five K run, so we're gonna go from the five K run to, uh, picking up trash. I'll probably stop and pick up the trash, so. Next meeting of beautification will be May fifteenth at seven P.M. here in Town Hall. Uh, Parks and Recreation, uh, probably read in the paper that the skate park has been the, uh, hot topic for the last two meetings. We invited the public to come out and speak, uh, about the skate park, and at the end of the day, the, uh, Board of Parks and Recreation has, uh, made the following recommendations for it, which will be coming through a letter from the chairman to the mayor to, uh, and council to discuss these things. Uh, first of all, they recommended that we have our town inspector, Rachel, um, go out and take a look at the structures to indeed verify, uh, how the structures look today and what can be done to, uh, to keep them, uh, uh, safe and viable. Uh, the Parks Board is recommending removing the fence. Uh, the Parks Board is recommending, uh, skating for free, no more cost to the, uh, to the, uh, skate park, uh, users. Uh, we'd like to reassign the, uh, parks attendant, uh, keep the police informed of this status, uh, that we're going through. Uh, the Parks Board would like to embrace the community rehab efforts. One family showed up with a, uh, future Gold Ward and Eagle Scout, uh, uh, young people who, uh, who offered to do some work at the skate park. So if we can do something to, to keep it, uh, keep it moving along for a couple more years, one year, whatever we can get out of it, uh, then the Parks Board would embrace that opportunity. And lastly, uh, have the new parks manager, as our old one has, uh, resigned, uh, that the new parks manager would facilitate conversations toward, uh, looking at a modern-day type of skate park or an alternative use for the footprint of the current skate park to a new amenity. So that's kind of how the, uh, skate park discussion has evolved. So that's something, uh, to be thinking about, and I'm not sure how eventually we, we address that on the council and mayor level, but, uh, that's the recommendations of the Parks Board. Uh, next, the, uh, this goes along with the master plan implementation. Uh, Rails to Trails, uh, focus is still on the, uh, Town View portion, which we've made some progress on that in that, in acquiring the Town View portion. And then the, uh, CSX portion, we're still trying to figure that one out. And that kind of ended up, uh, uh, a lot of the topic that we were talking to Senator Carden about was, uh, was how to get those things done, and he was, uh, he had very positive things to say about that. The Sabra Wang, um, grant, uh, input for a TAP grant, uh, for the stormwater management pond at Town View is, uh, moving forward. It's all drafted and ready to go and meet the deadline. Uh, we've had positive feedback from, uh, Delegate Afzali, uh, Senator Huff, and of course Senator Carden. So, uh, as well, we've had good citizens in support on that. Uh, at the meeting, we discussed the, uh, replacement and progress of the, uh, I'm sorry, the progress of the, uh, twin arch basketball court. Uh, we discussed the fitness equipment going on in over at Watkins Park. Chili Cook-Off is May twenty-sixth. Ava's, um, five K run is May nineteenth, nine A.M. Active.com is the website for that, if you want to, uh, come out. We're starting planning on camp night that will be August eleventh at Watkins Park, and the next meeting in Parks and Rec is May seventeenth at, uh, Town Hall.
It was August eleventh?
Yeah, but where's your report?
I could add.
Okay, up next, uh, EDC planning. Bob?
Okay, our EDC meeting was, Wednesday, April twenty-fifth. And once again, I'll be starting every report. The farmers market begins on Wednesday, May the sixteenth, four to seven P.M.
And today's Monday. Governor's coming on Wednesday.
Right here, Bob, three to seven.
At type of. Three to seven and continues every Wednesday through September twenty-sixth, bigger and better than last year.
With the exception of July.
That's on here too.
With the exception.
I didn't read this, that's on here.
Alice is gonna do your report.
See what happens when you interrupt me? I didn't get that in there. We're working on scheduling a meeting with the Sykesville EDC Commission and Main Street Manager. June the first is looking like promising, because they've come signed with their first Friday event. Stay tuned. We are looking at some unique programs to partner potential startup businesses with existing businesses downtown. We're also developing a list of questions to ask other communities about how they made things happen. Um, the Manor Heat Chili Cook-Off will take place on Saturday, May the twenty-sixth, ten A.M. to five P.M. Main Street will be closed from six A.M. until five P.M., and there'll be free parking at the Carnival Grounds with a free shuttle bus over here. Uh, Mamsa's planning a membership drive in downtown Mount Airy, sign up businesses and an organization that represents the downtown businesses. Um, recently, Carroll Community Bank opened its loan office in downtown, installing a brand-new ATM out there. That, we now have an ATM on Main Street. We've, we've had several inside businesses on Main Street, but now we've got one out there for anybody to use. Next D.C. meeting is, EDC meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May the twenty-third, seven P.M., Town Hall. Um, the Planning Commission meeting was on Monday, April the thirtieth. Brittany Manor's preliminary subdivision plan was approved. The basics are, it's a fifty-two acre project, seventy-two single-family home bordering, bordering the twin arch business park. Um, Planning Commission rules and procedure are being discussed. Downtown Master Plan Steering Committee will meet on Tuesday, May the eighth, six to seven P.M. That's tomorrow. Numbers of the recent water test at Harrison, Harrison LaSheu property have been sent to M.D. for, M.D.E. for their assessment and approval. The next Planning Commission meeting will be on Monday, the twenty-first, seven o'clock. One week early because of the Memorial Day holiday. Uh, the Maryland Municipal League Frederick County Chapter met on Thursday, April the twenty-sixth. Um, we, we held an election, the Frederick County Chapter elections results were that our district vice president will now be Frederick City Mayor Michael O'Connor. The chapter president will be Brunswick Mayor Jeffrey, Jeffrey Snoots, and the Frederick County Secretary Treasurer will be city administrator David Dunn. Um, the restoration of highway user revenues to eighty-five percent of pre-recession levels for five years, that's FY twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-four. The counties and municipalities will divide thirty-nine point eight million dollars, which is eight, like, it's only down fifteen percent from the highest we've ever gotten.
Yeah, it's up, I guess, think we're gonna net a hundred thousand, is what Charlene was saying. We're getting a hundred thousand more to town in Mount Airy.
And H U R money in twenty-twenty, yeah.
Hundred thousand more. It's fantastic. Finally, finally.
That's, that's one of MML's just biggest projects. I've been working on for ten years now.
We finally got it.
Finally got it. Uh, the H U Rs will sun, oh, there's another two point one million dollars that the governor was able to throw into that pot too. So we're really talking, you know, over forty million dollars. Um, the H U Rs will sunset after twenty-twenty-four and have to go through the legislative process again. But, you know, it's, hopefully, it, it will be one of the best ones ever. Um, the next MML chapter meeting will be held on May sixteenth at the Mount Airy Vodger Fire Carnival Ground and is our annual joint meeting between Frederick and Carroll Counties. Please be there. And that is my report.
All right. Sanitation, recycling, and sustainable Maryland. Jason?
Last month, we had the Sustainable Mount Airy Commission meeting. Uh, we discussed upcoming and future projects. Our next meeting will be June twentieth at seven P.M. Uh, recycling and sanitation will meet, uh, May sixteenth at seven P.M., both here at Town Hall. Reminder for yard waste is May nineteenth. We have an upcoming shredding and battery recycling event that is June second at Watkins Park. And with the nicer weather, weather, uh, long clippings, please blow them off of the street so they don't enter our water and sewer. And that is my report.
Thank you. Streets and Roads. Scott?
Okay, Streets and Roads, uh, we ended up having our meeting on the twenty-sixth of April. Councilman Poyer joined me for that meeting, so it was good to have somebody else there. Uh, we ended up discussing one item on the agenda, which was, uh, a local business owner had come to the commission trying to get information with regards, um, to how to proceed with his property. It's been put in front of this body before, um, so the road was in between the McDonald's highs and Mom Angelos. And so they were looking for some suggestions or guidance on what to do with it, um, specifically on trying to stop tractor trailers from going back there and turning around, people leaving their cars at night, et cetera. Um, so we discussed that briefly, gave him some pointers, and he, he went off on a good direction. Um, our next meeting for Streets and Roads will be June twenty-eighth, seven-thirty at Town Hall. That concludes my report.
All right, thanks. Water and Sewer, uh, Water and Sewer met this week. Our next meeting will be June sixth, uh, here. Don't want to forget that before I get there. Our, I guess our largest topic of discussion that's really coming up is we're looking for, to putting together some short, basically instructional paragraph that we can give to people who are concerned about the town wells impacting their local wells. Some type of information thing that we can give them, because we've, you know, we've learned things about exactly what affects what and all the testing that we do, so we're gonna be going through the drafting of that next few weeks. Uh, of course, there's always discussion about the alien landing pad, I mean, the water tower up the street. Uh, as you can see, that's moving forward. Uh, they should be dropping, I guess, the curtains soon, and then it'll be getting all painted. Uh, next meeting, six-six. Okay, uh, town administrator.
One, one thing real quick about water. Um, I walked into a discussion on the color of the water bills, the blue and the pink.
Oh, yeah.
And everybody that was at the table was saying, you know, we don't want that pink bill, so we're, we're paying the blue one.
Well, good, I'm glad, I'm glad that worked, because that was, for those of you who aren't here, that's a change we made maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago, changed the color of the bills to make them more, easier to jump out.
Jason's idea.
Good idea, Jason.
Young man.
Paying the bills.
The real key is it didn't cost anymore to order those two colors.
But that pink, that pink bill really, really gets your attention.
That green will get your attention.
I'll hand deliver it.
Well, after the pink, you get a door hanger. And that, and that's really expensive. Monica, you're up next.
Okay, um, right now, we're interviewing for the parks manager position, but we're also collecting resumes for the community planning administrator, which is Heather's job, because she's transitioning to the police department, and also Katie's job for the desk receptionist, because she's gonna be moving over when Mary goes.
Yes, and, and Katie has moved, been moving. I've heard that a lot of people have been asking Katie where she's going, assuming she's leaving the town, because we're advertising her position. Katie is just moving to the other desk in the same room.
Three feet.
So Katie is not leaving, but we're hiring somebody else to sit in that front thing, because Mary who sits there is moving elsewhere in the building as well.
Because Marcia's retiring after three years.
Yes, Marcia's retiring, Mary's moving upstairs, Katie's moving to the desk in the back, so we need somebody for the front.
Also, Annalise's last day is on Friday, which is May eleventh, so she took her job much closer to home, so we'll also be.
Yes, Annalise is really leaving, unfortunately.
Everyone get that?
The Marydell Gardens Stormwater Pond Project is now out for bid, so that construction will happen this summer. Um, we also received a Frederick County MPDES permit, a phase-two permit. Um, normally, we're covered under Carroll County, but MBE is making us get a separate permit for the Frederick County side of Mount Airy. The, uh, county administration, um, is gonna help us move through that permit process. It's good for five years, so we just received it about three or four days ago. Downtown Master Plan, Bob spoke to that steering committee meeting tomorrow, but we're also gonna talk about, um, dates for our first public open house meeting that's gonna go over marketing materials and, and basic information they've already collected. So we're looking at some late dates in May and, or the beginning of June. Um, and the last thing that I have is we've gotten a lot of calls about people keeping chickens at their house, and we don't have anything in the code that prohibits specifically having chickens. But if your neighbors complain, we consider it a nuisance complaint, and we pursue it with code enforcement, so. Just make care of any word of that.
I think there is.
So hens only too. Well, roosters wake you up.
There, there is a, there is a county regulation. Because we looked at this before.
Yeah, on the Frederick side.
Yeah, because we looked at this before.
Tom, where did the town attorney report?
Uh, over the last month, I worked, uh, quite a bit on the Dorsey Town annexation, which kind of due tonight, as well as a bit on upcoming hearing for the Green Tree Special Exception. This would be the mixed-use, uh, special exception application. Worked a little bit on ten-ten South Main Street, just a little bit, and, uh, also worked on, uh, the Town View, uh, documents that, uh, are being signed and, and approved and finalized, so.
And good catch, we were at the meeting, Larry and I, and you found a, a way to make it happen or make a quorum happen. That was a very good catch, so thank you for your astute, uh, legal knowledge. Fantastic. Could I ask on the Dorsey annexation, because I believe I know where it is? Barney, can you send a map to everybody? I believe we encircle the Dorsey area, so just think about what, a lot of the services they already use. I mean, we already respond as police, uh, thank you. But I encourage the town councilmen to do a site visit.
Yes, definitely do a site visit.
Do a site visit and look at, because I think there's some six new lots that could come in, but, uh, look at the fact that they're already using a lot of our services, but we would be taking over their roads unless the condition is real bad. I'd urge us to look at the road condition.
Take a four-wheel drive back there.
Okay, so it is bad. I urge you to look at the road condition. We'd be taking over that, garbage removal and snow, but everything else, we pretty much already cover. And it does make sense if we're surrounding a property to take it in, but just look at those expenses and the pros and the cons, please. Thank you.
All right, and we have Roger Wilson. Roger, newly-elected alderman in the city of Frederick, are you here as an alderman? Or are you here, uh, representing the county executive?
Represent, represent the county executive.
So you still have that role. I was wondering, are you still in that role? And by the way, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Frederick, Frederick City is very fortunate to have you. Roger's one of the few representatives that always come to town, always call. He called me earlier, asked if he could do anything for us. I had an issue on Buffalo Road. He got ahold of his, uh, transportation people. They took care of it, added signage. I do need to adjust some signage by Sterling Glenn. I need to reach back out to you. Just want to move the stop signs a little bit, uh, the speed signs, but he was very helpful in doing that, and I was gonna do it before Carl got on it, but thank you for all your service.
Well, he's Buffalo Road Frederick.
So welcome, welcome again, Roger.
Yes, so good evening, mayor and council members. Uh, it's good to be in Mount Airy tonight. Uh, my apologies for being late. I'm coming from a, a ceremony with my second daughter. She's in ROTC at.
Right.
Great.
Good, so she was being recognized tonight. So, uh, I wanted to be here tonight, and, uh, one, I, I saw one of the agenda items, um, you guys were voting on your budget, budget tonight, so hopefully that went well.
Well, you're, we're at the end of the agenda. That should say something.
Oh, okay, okay, I hope, okay, I won't spoil the surprise there. All right, um, what I wanted to, uh, just, uh, follow up on, uh, one of the council members, uh, King. You mentioned about the kind of the wrap-up in MML, and one of the things I wanted to add is that the Frederick County received in project open space about one point five million dollars, okay, to be split up amongst the municipalities, so that's good news as well, all right? So, um, and I think a meeting is, uh, being scheduled very soon to discuss that. So one point five million dollars, okay, all right? And, let's see, oh, on the. okay? All right. And let's see. Oh, on the chicken ordinance. Okay. You can use the city of Frederick as a model. We have a chicken ordinance, so feel free to reach back out to us. And I'll be putting on my other hat for that one. Yeah, no roosters, no roosters allowed, okay?
That's right. The rooster, the hen's square foot. The hens are no different than a bird. Roosters are.
Yeah, you don't need a rooster for eggs, right? Okay, all right. Did you know that?
No, no, I think there's, there's some odd egg facts.
Roosters are boys.
That's right.
Hands are girls.
I understand that.
You don't need a rooster for that, but it's good to see you all in.
So they're all immaculate conceptions, huh?
Yep, yep.
Wow, the incredible edible egg.
That's right. County Executive sends her best wishes and hopefully you all are doing well. Anything that I can take back.
No, we'd be here next week for the dinner?
Yes, I'll be here. I'll be here.
Good, we'll see you there. And send our regards back to her for doing a wonderful job. We're very happy to see her in that position, at least I am.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? If not, then I'll move, we adjourn. I've got a second from.
Did we pay the bills and all that stuff?
We don't need to.
We don't do that anymore.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, looks unanimous.